...with African American roundtables and others. But this is an inclusive one of many people from many cultures and ethnicities. So we have Filipinos, we have the Asian Americans, we have the Judea Christians, we have interfaith alliances, and also we have the LGBTQ community. We also include the accessibility for those who are either hearing or blind or partially blind. We're trying to including everyone, including our youth. So without further ado, I will share with you, we've had too many, but you can see we have been quite busy. Okay, our first one that you'll see. What did we ask? What concerns or problems do you see in Virginia Beach in the areas of inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility? What indicators do you have that those are problems? What ideas do you have to begin to solve the problems you identified? And what do you think we should begin work on first? Again, the mayor was there, I was there, and we had Niva White as our staff liaison, and we were not allowed to say much more than an introduction because we wanted to hear from the community people. Our next one, what concerns or problems did they share and discuss? Poor promotions of resources available. City needs more communication with the community. Mental health issue was a real hot button. Lack of awareness, support services. City personnel not equipped to handle diverse populations. Diverse programs needed. Inequity in government funding across the city, school services with organizations. Transportation, especially for those with disabilities. Accessibility to affordable housing. We need more diversity in city leadership. Access to affordable healthcare, affordable childcare, and poor relationships with law enforcement. Then we had them explain a little bit more. What was the indicators? And these are what the group brainstormed. Incarceration statistics. We have more increase in suicide. Lack of multiple means of public transport. We've had a summer of protests. Pointing time count of homeless persons. Increasing violence statistics. Increase in graffiti. Mental health issues being treated in the wrong place, i.e. the jail or school. Personal experience with city, school staff not equipped to handle language differences, special needs of customers, et cetera. Complaints received by the Atlantic Avenue Association. What are the ideas they shared? Create a diversity and inclusion office in the city. More training on inclusion and diversity for city staff. More transparent communication with the community. Create flexible, affordable housing. We need more diverse decision makers for oceanfront programming. Regional task force. Subsidize transportation options. Make website more accessible. Regional mental health facilities. Work-to-learn programs and training incentives for people to enter overwhelmed fields. Promote assistance services more effectively. Then the next was, what do you think we should work on first? Overwhelmingly, mental health. Contributing factor to incarceration, needs facility to treat substance abuse, and a regional mental health facility. Because a lot of the groups of the commission felt that this as a key component ended up being the cost for other things that happen in the community. City services. Create Office of Inclusion and Diversity Training for inclusion and diversity for city staff. Increase communication with community promotion of available resources. Provide materials that are accessible to all. For the housing and homelessness, more contracts are needed for affordable permanent housing. Transportation. Difficulty getting to city services. Lack of options, especially for individuals with disability and low income. The diverse programming had many relate to what's going on, especially at the oceanfront. They felt we have people that are from many different cultures that come and visit, including the military, and they felt there should be more increased diversity program for this culture. In the other words, the Virginia African American Cultural Center for helping to get that put up. Our next steps will be finalize working groups. Survey the commission for interest in serving on a working group. Openly communicate working groups and send our call for participation to the community. And the last one you see is the One Virginia Plan. I have been in communication with the Chief Officer of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for the state, who is Dr. Janice Underwood. And one of the things she mentioned, which she's trying to do with the city relates to House Bill 1993. They have a One Virginia Plan, and I'll quickly share that with you because in our next steps, we're going to send the links to this page with the resources that's available so everybody will be on one page when we meet again. And some people ask what this is. Well, the tool will help, will be held in to implement it all of the individualized strategic plans, like a roadmap for state agencies, other stakeholders to the shared goals of that One Virginia vision and mission. They use the inclusive excellence framework to create collective impact, sustainable change, innovation, and productivity across government and other sectors of the Commonwealth. Inclusive excellence gives Virginia a business advantage and makes the state a more attractive place to live, learn, work, play, and thrive. In conclusion, I would like to say that we've met with Mayor Dyer several times, and he has been very amenable for us moving this forward because unless we peel back the onion, we're not going to get very far. Another thing we're looking at is also connecting with other cities like Norfolk and Portman to see and have a plan because one is right next to the other. And we do have, already have diversity officers, some of you may have heard of Slappy, she's from Norfolk, and there's some others, but we plan to bring them to the table once we get our house kind of in place and their strategic plan so we can also send it up to Richmond. They are watching what we do. We are the largest city, and I believe with everyone's work and the support of city council, we can make this thrive in a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just make a comment or two before we throw it over to questions and comments. You know, the outgrowth of this was kind of the result, number of the cities. Mayor Tuck from Hampton a number of months ago underwent an initiative to, you know, work with youth violence, but one of the things we came out is that we have to get into the community. We have to do this at the community level. And if you could tell by the final picture up there, the broad spectrum of the people that we had, that we brought to the table for two fact finding and, you know, just, you know, brainstorming and, you know, listening and find out, you know, I think nowadays it's incredibly difficult to have those conversations that we need to have. But I think I could say that I have to commend Niva White, and I'm sure Dr. Ross Hammond will agree, both the facilitators and the recorders, you know, were both really proactive in being part of it, and the group was meshing, and they were getting along and exchanging cards and helping each other. And, but one of the things that we're trying to do is that we agreed on two really objectives of what we're trying to do. And the first one is community building, and that is the idea of getting into the community, into the households to help. And a number of the, you, one of the strengths that we have in Virginia Beach is that we're such a faith-based community of many faiths. And to help, those are the ones the government can't do and solve all the problems, but by using our community assets that are in line to do these things would certainly help. The problem that we saw was in too many times we operate in silos. Different church groups are operating independently without cohesion, and then, you know, other areas, or, you know, you know, the idea is to get it together and working synchronously. The other area of what we want to do is in the term of social justice, and especially those who are incarcerated. And we find out that, you know, folks, when they are incarcerated, they come out, they have trouble finding jobs, they may have more than likely, you know, a mental condition, they have trouble with transportation and housing. So a lot of the subgroups that we're putting together to address the multitude of situations that we have here, the workforce council is going to be engaged in trying to work with workforce development, and that anybody that we could do. But one of the biggest things we're finding with youth out there is they have no hope. And by giving them pathways, and then we're also working, even with our economic development, with the hive that opened up, to open those career pathways and as, you know, with the broadband coming in, with the wind turbines, and, you know, the cables coming in, we're on the threshold of establishing companies that are going to come in and provide those meaningful jobs that will give them the type of paying jobs that they need. The other part is healthcare. Dr. Cindy Romero is heading up our physical healthcare, and then we've got Linda Bright heading up mental awareness. And since we started this initiative, a number of mental health organizations have volunteered to come onboard. This is the thread that goes between all of the needs that we're currently having out there. Last night, I did a proclamation on behalf of the governor at Town Center for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, all part of community problems that we have to address. Todd Walker from JCOH is heading up our division on not only the homeless intervention, but finding affordable housing. And even meeting with Howard Kern last Friday, he says one of the problems they're having trouble in recruiting people is affordable housing to come in. And the thing is, the people, whether they get out of prison or they're just getting into a job, I think one of the reasons that we identified, you know, that as a need, and then, of course, transportation. Now, where we go from here is now that we've got all these subcategories, workforce, health, mental and physical health, home, and then also transportation, we're going to be putting up platforms where members, now we're going to start bringing in community assets that are experts in these areas and focus on that. But what we're going to do uniquely is cross-pollinize and have folks from workforce, working with housing, you know, working with mental health, and everybody is going to be in a collaborative spirit. So in essence, what we're hoping is that we have a template here to show on how a community can really come together. And I can honestly say that, you know, I was, you know, just excited over seeing the interactions of the group, of the folks that were getting together, many of those folks that you will recognize. But once again, it's a first step, but if I can be clear on one thing, we often hear that we come up with good ideas, we talk about it, and then it goes away. It winds up on a shelf somewhere. I can tell you that this motivated group of people here, we are going to be action-oriented and goal-oriented in terms about what we hope to achieve. And by bringing the community in conjunction with government and working with other agencies, the city of Virginia Beach is blessed to have a lot of intellectual capital that live out in our neighborhoods. Centerra committed to become a vital part of the physical and mental health. We are gaining partners as we continue to grow, and the more that we grow, the more outreach we're going to be able to get. Now, are we there yet? No. But is this a start? Yes. And I think it kind of defines us as a city about where we are and where we need to go. So, you know, once again, this is an initiative, and I thank Amelia and all, a lot of folks that really took some time and effort to come out. There's one gentleman up there, he was formerly incarcerated himself for three years as a teenager, and then when he got out, he became a probation officer. Now he runs halfway homes for youths in the system. We've got some incredible knowledge, Teresa Stanley from Human Rights Commission, you know, Dr. Pruitt from the NAACP. It's a very diverse, eclectic group that was not afraid to have the conversation. So at this point, I'd love to open it up for comments or questions or anything somebody might have. Mr. Moss.
Just an observation. In the Wall Street Journal, I believe it was yesterday on the front page, there was an article, and I shared this with a couple council members, about the unaffordable mortgages in America. It said, despite low interest rates, because of the price driven by a number of factors, that the average home nationwide, at current relatively unprecedented low rates, took 32.1% of the average family income, which means financial stress is over 30%, and many people have mortgages 40%. So I do think there's some structural issues which the article talked about, and many of those are going to take financial and other kind of instruments beyond our local ability to do to drive down costs, because a lot of the costs now are being driven by global commodity issues, which are really, have nothing to do with what we can decide. So it was an interesting article, if the staff can take a note, but it was a good read just to realize, so I think you can look at California and out west is just, you know, things tend to go from west to east, but I think that trend line is moving in this direction in the place that's most affordable, is our big competitors, is the middle of the country is where the most affordable homes are. So that is, in an economic sense, that you are correct, that is a huge issue today is, can you attract the workers, but can you house them? And the study shows that the millennials are leaving some of these big urban areas because they're now at an age where they want to buy, form families and buy homes, and those areas of the country are not compatible with home acquisition.
And Mr. Moss, you've always been the champion, you know, for, you know, the affordable housing, and, you know, that's one area that we really, you know, should, you know, be looking in because, you know, once again, if we're going to be bringing in the tech industries, but also it's just for anybody that, you know, whether they be, you know, working a maintenance job, which is critically essential, police, fire, teachers, you know, blue collar workers, you know, and we have to, you know, you know, to make those efforts in that regard. And we thought that Todd Walker, you know, but in terms of working with the homeless and converting homeless to get them, you know, fixed structures, and then, you know, working with a couple of our developers, Franklin Johnson and also Steve Lawson have done a number of projects where they take into consideration affordable rents and everything, but, you know, once again, it's just the idea of an awareness. Ms. Wilson.
And I want to also say something about what John is saying locally, because as you know, I'm in the real estate market, unless, it's really tough. Unless you have, unless you have money, you can't compete for property, and this is not just rental, I mean, this is for ownership, which is the American dream. It's the American dream to own your own home, and because the sellers are not paying closing costs, and that's, can be 3% to 4% of the cost of the house, and, you know, then they have to have a down payment, and then they have to be competitive, and a lot of the competition is, they have to guarantee appraisals because the houses are selling for more than what they're going to be appraised for. So unless somebody has, has some money, it's a really, really tough time for them. So John's really right, so it's not just the rental market, but the homeownership market. It's really tough right now.
And I think in line of what, you know, Ms. Wilson and Mr. Moss said, you know, the problem is multifaceted. You know, it's workforce, it's finding the jobs, it's a place to live. It's, you know, a lot of folks, especially with the COVID, you know, with the mental health issues, it's with the transportation issues. If you look at them, they're all kind of tied together, and, you know, one leads into another. If somebody gets out of prison, they're going to need a place to work, they're going to need a place to live that's affordable. Elsewise, you get, you know, repeat, they come back to recidivism. But the other thing is that the children that we have in school right now have a pathway to success, and, you know, that they can look forward to a good job. And college may not be in their plans at all. They have many, many opportunities right now to go in where, you know, the shipyards and everything have apprentice programs that are doing things. TCC and Centura College are setting up programs to get certificates to work on the wind turbines and things of that nature, and then also even with the military in terms of workforce, you know, the Skillbridge Program, where people a year out from retirement or leaving could actually work and transition in. So once again, I think we're trying to put all the key components together, you know, to really take a look as, not as an individual problem, but as a broad spectrum problem, and work collaboratively with each other. Any other questions or concerns? Dr. Ross Hammond, thank you so much for what you've done and what you will continue to do.
You're welcome.
And congratulations also on a great Fall Festival, once again, bringing community together.
Thank you so much, and as I leave, please remember our five categories, mental health, city services, housing and homelessness, transportation, and more diverse programming. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share what we're doing. As you see, we've been quite busy.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Are we ready for Dr. McNabb? Okay, as the council is aware, part of our public outreach efforts to inform and educate Virginia Beach residents about the flood protection program has been to engage experts who can evaluate the efforts and impacts. Our next presenter, Dr. Robert McNabb, will share the results of his studying, analyzing the economic impact of recurrent flooding in Virginia Beach. Professor McNabb is the Director of the Drydes Center for Economic Analysis and Policy at the Strom College of Business at Old Dominion University. You have a full copy of the report along with a one-page summary of keen findings. Dr. McNabb, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As we go through this very short presentation, I would always welcome questions that you may have. The bottom line up front is fairly straightforward. What we did is take the work that had already been done by VB Stormwater and Dewberry Consulting, and examined how the costs of building the current and proposed infrastructure compared to the damages that would accrue in the future from reoccurrent flooding. The way we looked at this was to say if these damages were unmitigated, that if nothing was done beyond what's on the current slate of programs, what would be the cost in terms of financial losses in today's dollars? Because this is a stream of damages and benefits over time, we have to bring it into today's dollars so that we get a way of comparing the two. If we look at the estimates, it suggests that we are looking at between $4.6 and $5.9 billion worth of damages from 2021 to 2069 if recurrent flooding is not mitigated in Virginia Beach. If we look at the ripple effects of that, in other words, the financial damages ripple through the economy, lowering economic output and employment, we can see that the damages increase to $6.1 to $7.9 billion in today's dollars. The easiest way we can communicate this is looking at the benefit-cost ratio. In other words, for every dollar of investment, how much damage is mitigated? And this works out to be 1 to 13. For every dollar investment, you mitigate approximately $13 in financial losses. If you include the ripple effects, this increases to 1 to 19 or 1 to 20. So in other words, for every dollar of investment in the current and proposed infrastructure program that is related to the infrastructure referendum, you would see roughly $19 to $20 worth of benefits with regards to flood damage that is mitigated. So how do we approach this? Well, first, we start off with the estimates from the Dewberry Report. They use hazards modeling, which is a tool developed by the federal government to look at natural hazards and the damages associated with natural hazards such as sea level rise, flooding, earthquakes, and so forth. It's a very widely accepted tool, and they calculate the average annualized lost over the study periods that are associated with the current sea level rise scenario, a 1.5 foot sea level rise scenario in 2040 to 2059, and then a three-foot sea level rise scenario in 2060 to 2069. How do we approach this from a modeling perspective? Because we want to be relatively conservative in our approach, we also want to make sure that our results are robust to changes in the assumptions. So given the time constraints, we modeled two scenarios. First, we took the time value money or the discount rate from the federal government at 7%. That is established by the Office of Management and Budget. We use the Congressional Budget Officers in forward-looking inflationary expectations. And then, when you're looking at economic impact analysis, the question is how much money leaks out of the local economy? So if you let a contract, and that's to a design firm in Richmond, that money leaks out of the Virginia Beach economy and has less of an economic impact in Virginia Beach vice hiring a local firm, which then spends its money in the local economy and has a larger direct impact. The alternative scenario looks at a lower discount rate, according to the Water Resources Development Act of 1974, that's updated annually for water projects in the United States. We assume a higher rate of inflation that we detail in the report, and we assume more significant leakages. So if you could think that we're saying more of this money leaks out of Virginia Beach, and then that lowers the overall economic impact. We then take our results and essentially test them for validity by increasing the discount rate significantly, that is, we are taking a lower value with regards to future damages, so we're discounting them more. We're exploring rates of higher rates of inflation, and then we actually say, what if the infrastructure is not as effective as proposed? What if you only mitigate 50% of the projected impacts? What if you mitigate only 25%? And the reason we did this is if, in the worst-case scenario that we could come up with, where you build infrastructure that is only 25% effective, does it still make sense? Even though we recognize that competent engineers would not build infrastructure that only works 25% relative to its proposed amount. So that's how we essentially looked at the question of efficiency and effectiveness. So the way you look at this is we looked at the present value, in other words, taking future damages and bringing it into current dollars, and we looked at it through two scenarios. So you can see here that in the 21 to 2039 study period, that essentially damages from recurrent flooding in present value are between $826 million and $1.1 billion. And this increases dramatically over time. And why is that? Because the sea level rise increases, you get more recurrent flooding, as you get more recurrent flooding, you get more damages, that damage increases in the out years of the study period. If we look at the net present value, the question is, if you build the infrastructure, you incur costs, and so you have to offset the damages that you mitigate relative to the cost of actually building the infrastructure. And if you do that, you could see here, we test the sensitivity by looking at different levels of mitigation, that at 100% mitigation, under the baseline scenario that I described, that the net present value of losses is approximately $4.2 billion. That is, what are the benefits with regards to reducing damages versus the cost? And it turns out to be positive, and a positive $4.2 billion over the study period if the infrastructure works as proposed. If the infrastructure is only 50% effective, then as you could see in the middle blue bar, that yields approximately net present value of $2 billion. So $2 billion more of benefits with regards to building the infrastructure if it only works as, at a level of 50% of proposed. So we looked at the benefit-cost ratios with regards to financial damages. Our concern would be if these benefit-cost ratios were closer to 1, then greater than 1, and this is essentially our stress test of our estimates that we put together. And so if you that's only 25% effective relative to its proposed effectiveness, you could see that for every dollar invested, you yield between $3.3 and $3.5 in benefits. And benefits are defined as damages avoided from flooding. And this accelerates upward to the proposed effectiveness of the infrastructure where you're looking for every dollar of investment, you're avoiding $13 to $14 in flooding damages. So, the question is, what is the economic impact? So, you have these financial losses. We then take the financial losses and we model how those financial losses would ripple through the Virginia Beach economy. Because this is not just a financial impact, it's a reduction in economic activity, creates job loss that we detail in the further report. And you could see that by modeling economic impact, you end up with higher levels of damage estimates on average over the study periods. And so, in the Dewberry Report, you end up with $349 million annually in the last study period. When you model the economic impact, it takes that $349 million of annual average losses and it ripples up and creates almost $500 million in total, financial plus economic impact in the out years of the study period. So, again, we construct the net present value. We look at, in today's dollars, after discounting over time, the benefits in terms of flooding mitigation and the cost of construction and weigh those two. And here, you can see that if the infrastructure projects operate as proposed, that you're looking at net present value, that is, the positive benefits associated with the project between 6.1 and 7.9 billion dollars over the study period. And even in the worst-case scenario, you're still generating between 1.2 and 1.6 billion dollars worth of positive impact to the Virginia Beach economy relative to the unmitigated loss scenario. So, if you look at the benefit-to-cost ratios, which is the simplest way to think about this, for every dollar invested, what is the benefit in terms of economic impact damages avoided? You would end up somewhere between 4.8 in the worst-case scenario to 19. So, for every dollar invested, you avoid direct and indirect and induced losses between 4.8 and $19. So, and remember, the 4.8 is essentially generated by assuming that the discount rate is higher, that the infrastructure projects are much less effective, and the inflation rate is much higher. So, that is essentially the stress test to establish the lower bound of the scenario. So, at the end of the day, we looked at this in the time we have provided. We were provided great support by Virginia Beach Stormwater, and we thank them for all the answers to the queries that we had. We estimate that for every dollar invested, if the infrastructure project passes, it will mitigate between $4 and $19 worth of damages to the Virginia Beach economy. And this seems relatively robust, given that we have stressed it with very non-conservative assumptions. In other words, we've looked at assumptions that are out the bounds of normality with regards to this type of analysis. Thank you very much for your attention. I'm happy to take a question.
Oh, wow. Compelling. Thank you. Mr. Moss! I'm shocked. I'm shocked. Do you have a question on Stormwater?
I do. I can never know enough about Stormwater, and I try to learn everything possible.
I am not an engineer, nor do I play one on TV.
And I'm not one either, but I have spent a lot of time around, and lawyers. But I do appreciate rolling that up in a way which I think citizens can easily, I call it the USA Today charts. You know, they have those nice graphs on USA Today newspaper. I love those. But I do have a question about what was the reconstitution period that, I can't remember that being addressed in Dewberry, but maybe it was. But once a flood happens, there's a loss. But then there's the cost of reconstitution over and above the loss.
Right.
And is that factored in here somewhere, and a timeframe that you thought took to recover from something?
Well, and we mentioned it, given the time that we had, and differentiate between what we typically think as a natural disaster loss and recurrent flooding. If a hurricane came and made landfall in Virginia Beach, the evidence suggests, given the vibrancy of the Virginia Beach economy, that this could actually, over time, be a net positive. We've seen the injection of public funds from the federal government, state government, and then private insurance agencies for reconstitution that actually generates construction jobs, improves the infrastructure and the recovery, and generates growth. So, we look at Houston as that type of example, where the sudden injection of millions, if not billions, of dollars in public and private aid revitalizes an economy and extends an expansion. We've also seen New Orleans where that doesn't happen. With recurrent flooding, I like to think of it as the economic death by a thousand cuts. Because you don't have one singular event, you have a multitude of events over time. And we could look at it, what's happening with regards to wildfires in California and other states? That as wildfires continue to happen, insurers either raise rates, increase restrictions, or abandon the market entirely. So, with regards to the reconstitution effect, one thing we discuss in the report is that it becomes harder and harder to reconstitute over time because insurers and other private entities will abandon the market entirely because of the increased risk for recurrent flooding.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because when I'm out talking to groups, I do talk about that very issue, that they could look at today their ability to acquire insurance. But that is a fleeting opportunity, because the people out there in the insurance business, we all know insurance people don't sell insurance to pay claims. So, therefore, through that. The other thing I'd just like you to briefly, because I like the fact that you captured, I got a chance to skim parts of the report up here, just got it, is that there is the job creation of just having the, independent of the work itself, but because we have a program to do, it generates its own jobs, 470 jobs I thought you talked about. But my peers, this is something I talked about when we were talking about this before, is that the project itself is fiscal stimulus. And I like the fact that you captured that, because here you say the project in and of itself will generate over that course of that 10-year period, that's how I take that, $371.5 million of economic activity and 3,300 jobs. I don't know later in the report if you have any indication or have a modeling capability to say that that amount of activity represents X dollars of tax revenue collected off of that activity, but maybe our staff can tell us that. But that would be a good thing to know, because I mentioned, you made me call Mr. Mayor, is if we have these things and we're getting revenue over baseline from this activity, it generates either revenue to use cash in lieu of borrowing, or allows us to generate cash that can be used to accelerate our backlog and ditch and pond maintenance off the investment itself. So, I'm very happy that you did include the fiscal impact of the investment. And I look forward to sharing these charts, I know Julie does, but with the public, because I think this is what many people, it is a pay me later or invest now. And I think that you've made a very strong compelling case that investing now, while no one likes to pay higher taxes, and certainly not me. But this is about value, and we're asking people to pay more for a new level of service, Mr. Mayor, not the same level of service. And Virginia Beach will be, I think your report shows it, will be much more economically competitive having made that investment. Thank you for your work. I look forward to reading the whole thing.
And Mr. Holcomb, if I could just address what Mr. Moss said, I couldn't agree more. You know, this being an investment, you know, a lot of us are risk averse to raise taxes or fees unnecessarily. But there comes a time where we have to take, you know, what Yogi Serra Berra said, when you come to a fork in the road, take it. And this is the one that we got to take. And when we talk about the investment that people are going to come when they look to bring their businesses down here, but also when we look at the quality of life of the people in the neighborhoods that are impacted, when we look at the viability of our military to have readiness here, you know, we can't jeopardize any of that. You know, we got to create that conducive thing, but by doing this and getting this passed, we will send a message that we are in fact proactive. Keep your families here. Bring your families here. Keep your military installations here. And I think, you know, that's at the underlying clause. And that's only a partial benefit of, you know, what you're talking about. Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, sir. I wanted to echo everything everybody said here, but if you'll go back to slide number two and go to the bottom, the last bullet, after accounting the ripple effects, that's very subtle, but well-played. But I think we have the copyright on that already, the ripple effect. But thank you for the presentation. I look forward to reading it as well.
I believe I saw that sign on the way in. I did not make the connection.
I think you did.
It's standard, it's our standard way of explaining how we do economic impact modeling. We toss a pebble in the pond, and then we capture the ripple effects from that pebble. One thing to understand is that these are not costs that can be deferred indefinitely. If taxpayers decide now not to fund this referendum, future councils and future taxpayers will be facing a similar decision with these costs already incurred and the ripple effects of those damages throughout the economy. So, it is a question of whether or not one could argue that the costs today are worth the benefit. The analysis suggests that for every dollar that you invest, you avoid approximately $13 in damages and $19 in total damages to the economy of Virginia Beach.
Great. Mr. Bellucci.
Thank you, Professor McNabb. I really appreciate your presentation and the information you shared with us. I think I was glad that Mr. Holcomb ended up on this slide, because I think for me, one of the most interesting and powerful and compelling pieces of information and statistics that you shared is that, one, the last one. Every $1 invested in a flood control project now will result in, can you repeat those numbers again?
So, for every dollar, we estimate if the infrastructure performs as expected, that is, the engineers are competent, and we believe that the engineers are competent. There's no evidence to the contrary, but that's how we stress test. For every dollar that these taxpayers of Virginia Beach invest in this infrastructure program, it will avoid approximately $13 in financial damages. And inclusive of that would be $19 in damages to the Virginia Beach economy. So, the benefit-to-cost ratio is approximately 1 to 13 for direct financial losses, 1 to 19 if we include economic impacts.
And I do appreciate that, because I think the other important piece of that is that you described it as an investment. And I think oftentimes, when we talk about flood control projects and flood mitigation efforts, we just, we talk about them in terms of cost. But in this case, it really is, it's an investment the people of Virginia Beach are going to be making in their, in our infrastructure to mitigate the impacts that flooding have. And I think you've done an extraordinary job of explaining, and of course, I don't know if you know, but I serve from the Rose Hall District, which was the most directly impacted by Hurricane Matthew in 2016. So, many of my neighbors will be the beneficiaries of these flood control projects, and that's right. But so, I'm also glad you ended up on that slide, because you really made a perfect segue to my next point, which is that we're here discussing the economic impact. And the economic impact is profound, no doubt about it. But it's additional to the economic impact is the human impact, the intangible impacts, the things that we can't analyze, we can't measure them, but that I see every day when I talk to people who live in the Rose Hall District and all around the city, it's anxiety over a rainstorm. It's extreme anxiety over an approaching tropical storm or hurricane. It's the disruption in lives that's illustrated in that slide of people moving out of their house, people still making repairs to their homes from events that occurred in 2016 and during other storms. And those are, those are all elements that we can't quantify. They're more qualitative, but they're equally as important and to consider. And so, I appreciate that you have included images like this, which really demonstrate not only loss of property, but a disruption in lives and the trauma that is affected by the impacts that we experience with flooding. So, I really appreciate your presentation, and those were just some thoughts that I wanted to share with you and with the community today.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? Yeah, Mr. Moss.
Not on this presentation, because I know a lot of things I hear from the public, and I'm sure Mrs. Henley has mentioned this too, is about what are we doing relative to our current ditches and canals and ponds? And so, I, what I have shared with them is that, three budgets back, you may recall, we moved $6 million roughly of labor out of the Stormwater Management Fund into the general tax base when we didn't raise the tax rate. We absorbed that cost increase of that labor to put $6 million more dollars into product. You may recall that. Also, for the last three successive budgets, we have put additional cash, $3 to $6 million each year to work down the backlog. And on the 19th of October, thinking positively, we'll be investing another $44 million of our American Rescue Plan Act towards that very thing. So, we really have done a lot of work, not as much as we need to do, but it is important that when we're out there telling the public, we have done a lot to increase our cash investment without borrowing to eliminate our backlog in ditch and canal maintenance. So, this isn't just about new, because we moved $100 million out of the CIP into the bond referendum. That debt service cost will now be used to also accelerate ditch, canal, and pond maintenance. So, I think we've done a very good job of balancing cash for today, if you want to borrow money for maintenance, really. And, but we were borrowing money for new capability and new capacity. And I just want to make sure the viewing public knows that we really have heard them about ditch, canal, and pond maintenance, and we have invested quite a bit of their money. It's not ours, it's theirs, but we have been, I think, very responsible, Mr. Mayor.
And, you know, Mr. Moss, I think, you know, just emphasize some things that you said before. One of the functions of this is to accelerate things. You know, we can go ahead, we can jog or we can sprint. And right now, a jog is not going to, you know, complete the marathon. And this is a marathon, not a sprint. And, you know, the things going forward, I think we have to stress to the public, okay, maybe you say, my neighborhood doesn't flood. Well, but guess what? A lot of other ones do. And that may be how you got to get to work. I've been in Mrs. Henley's district where I see flooding with no rain. It was just a wind shift that caused a problem. And once again, you know, if the canals aren't clean or anything, it creates chaos. But, but once again, I think this is for the betterment of everybody. This is the opportunity of the community to come together and think of their neighbors and think of the businesses and, you know, just, you know, do the right thing. But once again, your presentation was spot-on and timely. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We're moving on to city council discussions and initiatives. Anybody? Mr. Moss.
Couple of things. I keep mentioning this every time, only so that the people, the public, gives a better indication that we are, or at least I am proposing, and I sent it out all due by email, a proposal that would amend our city charter, that would allow us to hold special elections like we do for the House of Representatives and the House of Delegates to get us out of the appointment business. I want to keep saying that, and I'm going to post the actual text on my Facebook later today, but I want to make sure we're out there. Mr. Jones and I attended another meeting on Friday. You know, we had tasked us to do the Stormwater Management Task Force to look at regulation change. I just can't tell you how professionally that's being worked by our staff and the industry. We got another one on Friday with single-family homes and small lots. But one of the, one of the advice I gave them is, rather than trying to push to an artificial, to a deadline that we gave them, if they need more time to get it done right and get it fixed out, just to come back and tell us that, because we want to get it when it's been well-fedded with the industry and the community before it comes here, because that makes our job a little easier. So, they may come back and ask for more time. I think that would be the right thing to do. I would like for us, if we could get from our legislative person, I'd like to see the legislative packages of the other regional authorities. You know, they, sometimes they propose things which I don't know that we support, but that's the things like HRPT, the HRPTC, and other organizations that have these, HRT is another one. We got that surprise transit tax, which I don't think any of us, if we had a chance to vote on that, we might have expressed a different view. But I'd like to see what those are, so in case there is a position we like to take that's contrary to one that they've taken, we have an opportunity to express that to our legislators. And I just wanted to confirm that when we have our five-year forecast in November, you may recall, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, that I had asked that we would look at the sales that took place from January 1st through 30 June and compare those closed sales between that and the current appraisals, and if the tax assessed values on the July 4th, so we'd get an idea of just what might be, based on ground truth, what might be the change in real estate prices, so we would be informed on that. I think that would be good. And if in- So we'd get an idea of just what might be, based on ground truth, what might be the change in real estate prices so we would be informed on that. I think that would be good. And if and when we see the FEMA results for their new flood, when they probably publish their new rates and their new criteria and methodology, if the staff can make sure we get a copy of that, I think that would be insightful. And the other thing, I guess we'll talk maybe about it later, but I know we, and I'll defer to Mr. Jones, but we did receive that letter from JTR relative to asking for a deferral from the nineteenth of October on Marlin Bay to seven December. But since that requires a street closure, maybe if there aren't nine votes for a street closure, that might need to go back to the Planning Commission itself because they'll have significant rework to do on that site. So at some point, we need to have a discussion on that so we know and we can communicate to the public in advance of October nineteenth, you know, what action we are taking.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? Okay. Ms. Henley and then Mr. Holcomb.
Well, this is not an initiative of mine, but it's an initiative that's out there. And you mentioned the wind energy issue and the, all of the implications it's going to have for us. I just want to say how much I appreciate the Dominion Energy people and all the work that they have been doing to really contact the people who are at all of these potential transmission line routes. They've actually spent a good part of two different days driving me around and showing me the, the possible routes that might be taken. And they have spent just an enormous amount of time with anybody who would talk with them along any of those lines. And they, they have really done a good job in outreach. And of course, they'll be coming out in a few weeks, I guess, with a proposal that they, of course, it's going to be up to the State Corporation Commission, but at some point, we'll be asked to comment on it as well. But I, I really do want to mention the fact that I appreciate all that they have done and they're, they're working hard at it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Rocky and then, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just a, a more of a question than a discussion piece or initiative. My understanding is that, that despicable behavior that we talked about last weekend has been brought to a head and been ceased over in Jasmine Court. I didn't know if maybe the city attorney, I know the city manager's not here tonight, but maybe give us an update on, on what resolution was done for that disgusting cowardly behavior that has been brought to a head.
The only information that I have was what was provided in the email from Mr. Duhany to the council that suggests that, uh, the work of the police department resulted in a resolution where the conduct was to be discon- was being discontinued. I don't have any information beyond that, sir.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, the city manager is participating via WebEx and he would like to say something.
Please, please.
Um, Mr. Duhany, if you would go ahead, you're unmuted.
Has held that, that this disruptive and concerning behavior has ceased and resisted. So we're continuing to monitor the situation. Hopefully that continues to hold true.
Lady Walton and I are going to plan to go out and visit the Martinez family sometime at a, you know, a time of their convenience, you know, to express, you know, this, this is a type of situation that can't, you know, that should not exist, but, you know, we want at least to let folks know that the city does care. It was a tough issue, but, you know, we, we got to bring civility back to the public square. Yes, please, Ms. Walton, if you don't mind.
And just to add to that, um, certainly have reached out to Ms. Martinez and kind of received some feedback for her, from her, but also received feedback from, um, other members of the community who want to make sure this type of behavior is not something that will continue. Um, and they are calling on us and other legislators to do something about the laws that are in place that protect people who engage in this type of behavior. And that's what we really have at the center of all that's going on here, the law, the ordinance. We need to look at ways where we create laws and ordinance that stop people from engaging and perpetuating this behavior and terrorizing people in their own neighborhoods. That's the essential issue here. And so that really needs to be addressed.
No, I think we all concur. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I, I wanted to bring up, I believe it was in 2007, we enacted a program for senior citizens who had a lower income and assets with their real estate taxes and to be able to give them a break on that. And it's a, I think it's a sliding scale. So I don't know if we have actually looked at the assets part of that since 2007. I believe it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not including their house. And that was done in 2007. So that's been fourteen years. And if we haven't really looked at it, maybe we could go back and analyze it and, you know, because there's inflation and see if that, if that number is still a good number or if we need to change that number. So I'd like for the staff to look into that.
Yep. Mr. Moss.
You, you are, you are correct, but we did make one change. You may recall, it was Mrs. Kennedy who brought to our attention that when people take reverse mortgages, they're pulling on to the equity of their home and then they're depositing it. And that was being counted as income and they were becoming disqualified. Remember, we, we changed it to not include people taking, uh, reverse mortgages. So that was a change that we, we did make on that. Um, but I don't, I have something else I wanted to bring up, but someone else might want to be recognized that hasn't been slow-waited.
Okay.
On that issue, uh, for the elderly, is that what you were talking about? We did have a study committee maybe about five years ago because we realized that everything got really out of whack during that time when, uh, everything was happening in the housing market and then collapsed. And so we did try to equalize, uh, everything at that point. Uh, and I think we made the, uh, uh, resolution that every year it would automatically be reviewed as a part of our budget process and would come to us, uh, for any changes and adjustments that are made at, at that time. And so I'm assuming that we've been doing that. I know a couple of times I asked and maybe Kevin can.
Kevin, the shell answer man.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, um, to answer Councilwoman Henley's question, that is correct. Um, in the appendix of the adopted FY22 operating budget, there is a review where staff does this. So we compared ourselves to regional offerings of the tax relief for the elderly and disabled programs. And, uh, the, we were in line in comparison with what others were offering at the point in time. There was no recommendations to make modifications to the program. However, if city council would like for us to look at, look at it again or continue to monitor it, we could certainly do that as part of the upcoming budget process as well.
Well, do you know if that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar assets, and I'm talking really about assets, has that changed since 2007?
I don't believe the price of the, um, the qualifying factor of the asset value can't exceed a certain amount or it can't be counted against it. I don't believe that's been adjusted in quite some time. Built into it is the growth factor on the allowable amount of income threshold for the parameters of the program. It's based on the assessment growth of the median single-family, um, home value. And so the income tables to qualify for the parameters of the program grow by that amount each year.
Right. And it doesn't include your, your personal home as part of the assets.
Correct.
So, I, anyway, I'm just asking if we could. I'm glad that everybody is so on top of this question.
So you are correct. It's been three hundred and fifty thousand, um, going back at least to 2007. That used to be set by statute. There was a constitutional change that deferred it down to the local governing body. So you have discretion to change that how you see fit. Uh, I will note that the assets are very rarely a disqualifier in the sense that once you take out a person's home, then, um, unless they have a business interest or, or multiple businesses, they rarely get to that three fifty, but I can talk to the commissioner and get back to you.
I, I did have a gentleman call me that he'd been able to not pay his taxes and all of a sudden he had his assets because of the values going up and interest and all that. All of a sudden he was disqualified and his income's only twenty-one thousand a year. So that's not very much. Anyway, that's why I thought, well, gosh, if we haven't looked at it since 2007, and I think with inflation, it's, it'd be worth looking into.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Moss?
My last item, we, I think we all got the letter from Mr. Ballard relative to the flotation devices in the Lynn Haven River. You may recall this when Mr. Leahy was the acting city manager. We had several public discussions and deferrals. And at the time, I'm going to go back and ask this, I may have the city clerk to go back and pull the verbatims, maybe even the videos from those explanations. But my recall, which may not be perfect, was that these things would not be floating on the surface, that in fact, that they would always be submerged in at least some amount of, and I can't remember, distance below the waterline. Now, these may be cherry pick pictures, so I'm not, I'm not drawing any conclusions. All I can say is the pictures are not consistent with the representations made before this body as to how those things would perform. So I would like at the appropriate time, I realize it's going to take some work, Mr. Mayor, so I'm not asking for next Tuesday or some rushed item, but I want someone to come back and say, compare what we were told to what we're now seeing and are, and is what we're seeing atypical due to some kind of particular climate environment that is this short-lived and therefore it's not typical? But we, I think we are owed some explanation of why what we see doesn't line up with what we were told.
John, I think those were balls.
Yes.
That were over a little neck rather than.
Than these?
Where these are. So I think these are different.
You think these are different? You could be right, but then.
And they were balls and I'm looking at the picture, they were more like squares.
Right. So this isn't the same?
And Mr. Ballard lives over near Allington.
Okay. So I stand corrected. Thank you.
The balls were in little neck.
Well, then I still would like to know.
But still, it looks pretty awful.
Yes. I, I, sorry, I got confusion. I, retraction of my apologies. I just, uh, when I looked at it, I says, hmm, this looks like the same thing.
If we can have our virtual city manager look into it. All righty. Okay. Thank you. Um, no other comments at this point. Uh, we will do agenda, uh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. He's first.
Okay.
Um, Mrs. Henley and I may have been raising our hands about the same item. But, uh, so if that's the case.
I was going to talk about liaison reports.
That's what I was going to talk about.
Oh, okay. No, not my oversight.
And, well, Mrs. Henley, if it's okay with you, I'll give it a shot. And then if you have anything to add to the, um, report on boards and commissions, I would welcome it.
Okay. Ms. Henley, go ahead.
I think he was going to.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, I just wanted to point out, um, at the request of a, of a member of the citizen, of the committee on boards and commissions, that, um, on our agenda this evening is, of which Mrs. Henley and I are both liaisons, on our agenda this evening is a, an ordinance to add seats for two high school students to the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission. And, um, I just wanted to share that the, um, recommendation is a direct outcome of the discussions that are occurring at the, um, at the Citizen Committee on Boards and Commissions. Um, and you'll hear more from them in the future, but it's specifically, um, and this was shared by Walter Camp, who's the secretary of the Clean Community Commission, as well as chair of the Bikes, Trailways and Advisory Committee, that it's a reflection of their efforts, um, to include more student voices in the city's boards and commissions. And so with the additions that hopefully will occur tonight, there'll be, um, seven boards and commissions with student seats. And, um, he did ask that we would share that information as context for your consideration this evening.
Okay. Ms. Henley.
Just a, a couple of other, uh, boards that I'm on, um, or liaison for it. That boards and commissions group has been meeting faithfully for several months and they have gone over every single word and, and, uh, all of the, uh, documents that relate to boards and commissions. And when you get that, it's going to be, uh, something that I think is going to be great for us and I'll, I won't mention that anymore. Uh, on the Green Ribbon Committee, I did bring to you last week with the legislative agenda, uh, two or three items that the Green Ribbon Committee is interested in and you'll be seeing. Particularly, I hope we'll do a better job staying in touch with the General Assembly on what's being, uh, put into the hopper relating to tree preservation. Uh, and we've done a lot of work here and, um, our folks have been continuing to do a lot of work. And so we want to monitor that closely and the Green Ribbon Committee is very much concerned about those issues and also some of the funding that we put in the budget this year for VCAP and better way to analyze that. But I'd like to, uh, spend more time, uh, in relation to the Community Services Board and, uh, as liaison to that. And I'll just say that since the very first allocation of the CARES Act, the very first time we were allocating for that funding, I've been asking that mental health be considered. And I am so glad that it's finally getting attention because mental health issues have been exacerbated by the pandemic in so many different ways. And mental health really needs to be considered along with and as a public safety issue. And, you know, we dealt with public safety very well in the budget. And I think it's, it's the right time now that we start looking at the mental health component because that's very important with what happens. I know that you mentioned that, uh, in your committee, that there was someone who had been incarcerated for three years. So there is so much involved here. And our Department of Human Services has dedicated employees who have done an extraordinary job at keeping all of our operations going during the pandemic. And those operations are 24/7. And they, they really need to be appreciated for all that they have done. And I think during the pandemic, we were seeing some of the highest COVID rates from that department, along with our public safety. And those folks really deserve a lot of, of, uh, thank you from us. Staff shortages are now one of the chief concerns. And as, as I was hearing about, uh, this last week at the meeting, uh, I, I just got a little worried because some of our units are, one of them in particular is, is at 50% shortage. That's serious. Well, first and foremost, I think we need to make certain that those people who have stuck with the job throughout the tough time are properly appreciated and compensated. And I think that's up to us to, to work on. I've also been asking that we have a briefing about our total workforce because we've got serious shortages throughout the organization. And we've certainly been hearing about that from tackle football and not being able to do that because we couldn't hire people or we can't cut the grass because we can't hire people. These shortages, these staff shortages are throughout our organization. And it's my understanding that we're going to be having a briefing about our workforce, uh, staff shortages next week. And I'm, I'm really anxious to hear, uh, how we might address some of these issues because I think it's very serious throughout our organization. Well, somehow, since I've been asking questions about the best way we can address these staff shortages, especially in my role as the city council liaison to the Community Service Board, the word got around that I'm opposed to this appropriation on our agenda tonight. Well, I certainly am not opposed to a $200,000 appropriation to fill mental health positions. I just want it to be right. I simply ask if we could defer the vote to our next meeting so that we could have the information from the staff workforce briefing and to know some other possibilities for going forward. I think there are any number of ways that we can address this and I think we have to be very creative, particularly with our, our, our public employees. But I think the private and, and nonprofit sector need to be in there with us. We need to do this collectively. It needs to be all of us working together. Well, also, when I asked for a report about the $400,000 Tourism Industry Grant, which we approved several months ago, and on which this, uh, appropriation tonight is to be modeled, I'm told that the first phase of their research study is due to be released this coming Friday, October eighth. And by December fifteenth, Phase Two will be complete of their research, which will include recommendations for long-term solutions to this problem. And I think the solutions are long-term. I think we've got to get more people in this, in this job pool because right now we're all just competing with each other for these people who are available to do these jobs. And so it's going to be not just a quick fix. It's going to be something we're going to have to really work at to attract people and to get people into these, uh, into this job area. It's going to be, uh, quick. But then as to the program performance of this $400,000 grant which we gave, I'm told that to date, there have been, expended nineteen thousand dollars in bonus incentives to approximately nineteen employees. And there are approximately. 19 employees, and there are approximately 20 in the pipeline. Well, it doesn't sound to me that we really know yet what the model is to be, the only thing that we have in this ordinance explanation is that there would be cash incentive of $1,000, and that the recipient would need to serve for a minimum of 30 days prior to accessing the bonus, and commit to continuing to serve as a mental health provider for a minimum of six months thereafter. Well, we are accountable for how this tax money is spent, and I just want to make sure that whatever we approve, whether it's the tourism grant, or the mental health grant, or any other grant, or what we do with our public sector people, I want to make sure we're getting the job done, and getting it done for our citizens and our employees, and I just don't want anybody to think that by this $200,000, we've addressed the problem. We haven't, and I, I think we can do a lot better than this, and I, I want to make sure that we are allocating money for our public employees, as well as the private and the nonprofits.
Thank you, Ms. Henley, Mr. Belucci.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as the, as one of the patrons of the ordinance that was just referenced, I feel an obligation and a responsibility to respond. I certainly have a great deal of respect for my colleague, Mrs. Henley, and for her, the experience she brings to the job and the perspective that she shared, but I also am extremely concerned about the implication and inferences that were made in the comments that were just shared, that somehow I am not supportive of our municipal workforce. I am, I am the liaison to the Social Services Advisory Board, I have been a champion for human services employees, and they know that. Further, there's an implication that somehow this was hastily prepared, not true. We've been working in community for months upon months, and I've been working in community for years, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, and as a member of this body, to bring solutions around mental health to the table. That is, this is one tool, this is one element that's part of that discussion, so I also take exception to the inference that somehow we're giving the impression that this issue is being solved or addressed through this program, and I've never made that inference. I don't think any of the cosponsors of this resolution or ordinance have made that inference or implication, or that we would have arrived at that conclusion. So I appreciate the remarks that were shared, I share the concerns, I think we all have the same goal, which is to address the mental health and behavioral health issues that we share, that we experience as a country, as a community, but I also think that I have an obligation, not only to the work that we did with city staff, and with members of our community, and with human services municipal employees, but also an obligation to the people who are in need, desperate need, of mental health services and access to the care that they need, to get the facts right, and to present a true picture of how this program was developed, and how it was initiated and presented to the council, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, excuse me, but the only time I had first heard of it was when you passed that resolution last week, I believe it was last week, and asked us to pass it this week, that was my first knowledge, and so if there were others who had been working on it, I apologize, but that was just the first knowledge I had of it.
Wait. Yeah, Mr. Moss.
The Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation just concluded and received their annual audit, it was an outstandingly good job, you know, everything, it's, this shows once again, we changed out the leadership, what a big difference it made in that organization. They also reported 98% occupancy on their units, which is, if you remember where we were, how far we have come with that, and outreach, they have just done a superb job. I know there's some other things that I'm not going to mention at this point, that Council Belucci and I are, are working on to bring back, but they really have, and the board members have really, they are intimately involved in the operation, and we have, that has just really become, turned into a showcase of performance, and everybody on this board is a, a part of that. But to the larger question just discussed, beyond all that, this structural demographic issues that we are facing is not just solvable by money, you can look at shortages across the world relative to skill set, and so it is going to take, I think, unconventional approaches as how we approach it, maybe redefine how we deliver services altogether, but it won't be, won't be easy to do. If, if we weren't using funds that are one-time money for what we hope is maybe a one-time problem, I think a lot of questions could be, could be raised and worth, worth studying. I think, I didn't vote for the $1,000 from people at the restaurants, as people well know, I, I thought that we were just chasing retention, but we also weren't talking about delivering a critical public service, I think this is something different, there might be, it might not be perfect, but I think this is the case where better might be the better enemy of good enough, so while I wasn't in favor of giving $1,000 to the private sector, where I think they can raise their own money, this is developing a public good, so with some reservations, but I do plan on supporting it, but I do think, Ms. Henley's fundamental question about, because households are facing these same issues when they don't have work or miss skills, so it isn't just compensation of pri, of public sector, private sector, it's every single household in Virginia Beach has their own experiences, and we need to look at that in totality, and, and I hope that the report that we get next Tuesday is one that has been well researched and, and been based on a plethora of research on structural unemployment issues, demographic issues, workforce participation, what's barriers to participation, one of which is childcare is a huge work for people coming back, so I think this is a very complicated, I'll call it intricate, not complicated, but a very intricate issue that we have to deal with, and, and I do with Ms. Henley, that we need to properly define it before we start throwing money at it, but we have an immediate issue, and I, I do agree with my colleague, Mr. Belucci, that this is a gamble that we can, a risk we can afford to take.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that Eva Poole, who has served as the Director of Library Services for the City of Virginia Beach for, I believe, eight years, time flies. It seems like just yesterday, she was the replacement for our longtime library director, Marcy Sims, she's announced her retirement at the end of this year, and that news is being greeted with, with regret for losing her services, but congratulations to her, to Eva on a wonderful stint as our director. I tell you, following up somebody as popular and as long-serving as Marcy Sims, I don't know whether Eva knew what she was getting into, and she did, but she's done a marvelous job, and both, I've served for many years as a member of the Library Board and the Library Foundation, and her service to both those organizations has stimulated a torrent of recognition today, when she announced that she'd leave at the end of the year, and I want to make public, personal tip of the hat to Eva and wish her all the best as she returns to Texas to be with her family there when she concludes her work for Virginia Beach. Thank you, Eva.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, if I could say this, I think what Mr. Tower said, once again, just kinds of come in what we're talking about with workforce. You know, it's a situation, and I think Mr. Moss is right, you know, it, this is not unique to Virginia Beach at all. So, you know, two points along that line, first of all, it's going to be incumbent on us, I think, you know, it's kind of like in physical therapy, when you meet a patient, you figure out what's wrong, you come up with a short-term goal, then you come up with a long-term goal that designed to, you know, produce a solution. And I think what happens is, we got a lot of different ideas about what the goals are, about how to get there, and at the speed and everything, I think it's important that we just decide on, we got to do something. And, you know, once again, I, I just want to kind of say that yesterday, when I got to deliver the governor's resolution on Domestic Violence Awareness Month, when we talk about what one second of tragedy could do to somebody, the keynote speaker was a mother who, his daughter, after she broke up with her boyfriend like 15 years ago, hunted her down and shot her in the parking lot. In one second, people's lives change dramatically, and it happens over and over, there were so many victims of domestic violence there, and that's only one segment, one piece of the mental health situations that go there. You know, we often said that when we were talking about opening the beaches, six, a year and a half ago, our discussions with the governor, we had to deal with the COVID, but we also had to deal with the collateral consequences of the COVID, which were anxiety, depression, suicide, drugs, alcohol, domestic abuse, that were all going to be, you know, here with us, that have exacerbated a lot of the problems that have already existed. So, you know, I think, you know, the thing is, between what Mr. Belucci and Ms. Henley said, mental health has to be a priority of this council, just as much as stormwater or anything else, because that is what affects the nuclear family so much, that's what affects our community so much, and, you know, that affects everything from, you know, crime to elder abuse to you name it. You know, this is a crisis that we are obligated to address, you know, somehow, some way, whether, you know, but it's got to be proactive, and, you know, the thing is, I think this council realizes that that, this is the new priority, you know, right up there, because it's so, I hate to say it's so common, but it is, in terms of mental health, you know, and Rocky, you work in, in the, you know, the jails, how many prisoners are there that should not be there, but unfortunately are? And let me just say one thing, I had a informal conversation with Howard Kern last Friday from Centerra, and we talked about mental health, and just so you know, we talked about the need for a regional hospital-type facility that is a joint venture, which would be a place where anybody in the South Side can bring somebody that might be at mental risk, you know, for the proper intervention and treatment. All in the discussion now, but, you know, I think right now, thank you both for bringing it forward, and, you know, but Virginia Beach really does it best, even at the ceremony yesterday for the abuse folks, there were so many of our professionals there, especially from the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office that are into intervention, and about maybe eight other groups that are trying to help, the community is out there helping. Mrs. Henley, you had your arm up?
Well, no, I'm just puzzling, because, okay, the tourism industry has a much bigger job pool, and what, in June, we approved that program, that $1,000 bonus you would get hired, and they've only been able to hire 19 people? Now, if that's not the way you go about filling these positions, and it looks to me like that's not the answer, what is this $200,000 going to do? Are we stuck with just, since it's only, that's the only thing it talks about in this thing we're passing today? It seems to me that what's got to happen is, we've got to do some things to encourage people to become involved in, in working in these, these jobs, working with our higher education partners to maybe offer part-time jobs to people who will take some of these, these jobs, and, and we could pay some of that money. I think we're going to have to be very creative in what we do, I, I just, I don't know how we're going to find these employees, because like I say, all of the healthcare people involved in this are, are after the same few people who are doing this work. It's, to me, it's a, it's a much bigger thing, and I just hope we're not tied down to, well, the only thing we've got is the $1,000 bonus if you'll work for six months, that's not going to do it.
Could I make a, you know, sug, yeah, Mr. Belucci?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and since some questions were raised, I'd like to take a stab at answering them, but first I want to start with the premise that the people of Virginia Beach, the citizens, our neighbors, who are in need of mental health services, often the first step in acquiring the help they need and the services they need is through a private practice or a nonprofit provider, that's how they reach out to get the vital services they need when they're not in crisis. That's how we connect people with the services they need, so that they can avoid finding themselves in crisis. I see, you know, we've got a number of folks from our Virginia Beach Police Department who are here in the room with us, and I guarantee you, any one of those persons can tell you about what it's like, the additional burdens that are placed on them when they interact with the person who is in crisis. So I want to point out the care and consideration for the city workforce that includes our public safety EMS volunteers, police officers, sheriff deputies, in addition, and inclusive of our human services employees, when we talk about our consideration and looking out and advocating for their interests, so, but that was a digression, the, most people, that's how they begin their process, when they encounter a community services board or a human services individual, or a police officer, they're experiencing crisis. So one of the first ways we can begin to address this issue is by making sure that the private and nonprofit sectors are supported, that they're vibrant, so that there's a wraparound portfolio of services, so that we can avoid members of our families, or even ourselves, or members of our community finding themselves in crisis. So I would defend and advocate and extol the virtues of supporting the private and nonprofit sectors, as well as the public sector, because it's the entire range of services that our community relies upon. Also, I don't think anyone has given the impression that this program is meant to be exclusively how our council addresses this concern. And then finally, I'd like to say that I think we all share the same goals here, so I just don't, genuinely don't understand the tension, or even potential animosity that's coming around this issue. I think we should be supporting each other and working together to find a holistic and comprehensive, you know, menu of options to address this, so I really regret that we find ourselves in this situation, but I also can't just allow the, the misinformation that's being shared about not only this program, but I think about the, the issue itself to continue to be advanced. This is not about incarceration, this is about making sure that people don't find themselves incarcerated, by connecting them with the vital services they need, so that they can avoid a situation where they find themselves incarcerated, and where we can ensure that our public safety professionals don't find themselves also, even though they're capably trained and, and very, very extremely well-qualified to provide crucial first responder mental health crisis intervention, that they, that we're not placing that additional burden, continuing to place that conditional, additional burden on them. So I would just challenge my colleagues on this body to have a kinder heart about this conversation, perhaps a more open mind, in that, that we work together to create lasting, meaningful, holistic solutions to this issue that, that really plagues our city and impacts every family.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I've been trying to say, and that I think it should be holistic, and it shouldn't be just confined to this one, one area, and, and, you know, that, that's my whole point, is that it is very broad, and it needs to be holistic, and I hope that this isn't what we're only confining it to.
I, I'm not sure how you ever received that impression.
Because that's what it's written here.
Also, if I could make a clarification, and I would, I would make an inquiry to the city manager who may be listening, or to Mr. Tower, I do not think that the information that's shared about the hospitality, tourism, workforce incentive program is accurate.
It's what they sent, I'm reading from an email.
Yeah, I have one in place, yeah.
I don't think that it, that is accurate, in fact, I recall receiving reports that showed at one point, and that was several weeks ago, half of the money, half of the $400,000 had been appropriated, and so I do think the program has been more successful than was represented here. I don't have the information in front of me that you have, but if anyone here has more up-to-date information, but to represent that only 19 jobs have been filled, I do not believe that's accurate.
Okay, okay, at this point, please, let's not go back and forth and...
And, you know, once again, we got to mutually respect. Let's just say this. I think that, once again, I think we're in agreement on the outcome. But, you know, a couple of the details and what's going on. What I'm going to recommend is that, you know, once again, perhaps we're just asking for a little bit of a deferral. I guess, you know, we'll get some other information. But, you know, a couple other things. I think we should bring maybe into our next workshop some of the clarity about what we're going to need, you know, to move forward. So, you know, we can get on the same page.
So I just want to...
And so we can get on the same page. And then from there, I would like to bring in somebody from the Workforce Council, you know, and to find out what is going on and get the accurate picture about what's going on. And then, you know, even within the term of mental health, I think the one thing we can agree on right now, there is not a unilateral approach to fixing the problem. This is going to take multiple agencies and, you know, initiatives. You know, harking back to our mass tragedy, what happened was, we were blessed to be inundated with many counselors that flocked to Virginia Beach that really, really tried to help in an emergency situation. And the thing is, even if you talk to a lot of police officers, when they get a call for a domestic dispute, they never know what they're going to wind up with, because those sometimes are the most volatile and emotional going. And I can tell you with a lot of pride that our police, with their CIT certifications and things, we are working in this regard more than a lot of other cities. But I think if we schedule certain things in our workshop this coming week, that would provide the clarity. Mr. Belucci?
Mr. Mayor, I do object to a deferral. And so it may be more appropriate to hear...
We'll do, we'll hear that when we go through, you know, the consent agenda. Fair enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay? All right, anybody else? Okay, no other comments? Okay.
Do the agenda?
Madam Vice Mayor, we're...
All right.
We're probably going to, we're going to have an add-on, and then I'm going to make a recommendation about the agenda tonight.
Do you want to talk about the add-on first?
Why don't you go ahead and...
Okay, I'll give you the folder.
Yeah, okay, there we go. More handies out.
So this add-on, I talked to everyone here about, you'll see it when it comes around. Everybody, almost everybody has signed on as a sponsor and kind of don't want to say a whole lot about it out loud because, you know, I expect it to be a surprise tonight. So does anybody have a problem with us being an add-on tonight? And the other thing I'd like to do is if we could do it at the beginning so people can go home.
Yeah, you know, what I was going to recommend that we alter, you know, the order in which we do things is, you know, especially to bring on, we're going to have a number of speakers, both on the public items, but then also on the replacement. If we can do the agenda first and then do the presentations...
You mean the public comment, you mean?
Yeah, the public comment. And, you know, we can, even before we bring up Jim, let's do the consent. Okay? Okay, so, anybody object to doing that? In other words, once we go to the meeting, we will do the consent agenda first. And then we'll have the regular hearings. And then we'll go to the mayor's presentation, the public comments on the candidates, and then the public hearings.
All right.
Okay?
So I'm just trying to make sure I have it. So I thought at first, what I thought we were hearing is we were going to have a motion to add something to the agenda. And then when we added to the agenda, I thought I heard Ms. Wilson say, make that the first thing that we do. But now I hear that, what I heard the mayor say is that we're going to do it later in the...
No, when we do the consent agenda and the vote on the agenda first. So this way, it'll be voted upon first.
Oh, for the consent agenda, okay. I just was, and then after the consent agenda, we're going to do the public comment.
And, you know, the public presentation of Jim Wood and then the public comments.
Gotcha.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
And then the rest of the agenda that's not on consent?
Yeah, well, let's do that agenda. Well, let's see what's left after the consent agenda, okay? I know today is a very unique day.
I understood what you said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's just kind of go with the flow. Ordinances and resolutions. Does anybody have any problems with any items, Mr. Moss?
I am voting for item number nine. But I have asked the city manager, when we get next year's budget, to have a better way of doing this allocation of these grants through COIG as a special category. Because I think, in the long run, I think that'd be better if we have a citizen body dealing with those than the council itself. But I am not going to inject myself on this issue. But I have asked that we have a different approach when we adopt next year's budget, and he's going to bring that forward.
It's not onesie-twosie type of thing.
I had asked for the same thing, because I was not aware of these grants.
No, it's, okay, so...
I'm all good. I'm just going to share with you that we'll look at it differently in next year.
So 1 through 10, everybody is okay?
And then we have the add-on on 11.
How about number eight?
Sorry, Vice Mayor. We have speakers on K3 and K8. So those two items will need to be pulled from the consent agenda.
K3 and 8, okay.
Okay, and then...
Planning.
Can we make the add-on K8 and do that first? No, oh.
No, that would be...
The add-on.
The add-on for consent would be item 11.
Okay, planning, Lynn Haven District. We could use that person tonight. But does anybody have any issues with the Lynn Haven Dive Center LLC, Blue Water Properties LLC, and SLMD LLC? Consent. Number two, Mrs. Centerville, TVT, ILLC, DBA, Tower Ventures, Care of Lou Katzerman, Pleasant Valley Associates LLC. Miss Wooten.
I don't have any objections now.
Consent. Number three, this is for Bayside, Yvonne Lee Hypes, Lucas and Esther Diane Schneider, Co-Executrixes of the Estate of Arena, Craig Hypes Ryan.
Number five with that.
Number four, Janita White, this is Kempsville, conditional use permit.
All good.
And then number five is the ordinance to amend the city zoning ordinances. A is the dimensional requirements for apartment districts. And B is the historic and cultural districts. Anybody any issues? Okay, wow.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia has amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of the specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1, council, appointees, boards, commissioners, authorities, boards, commissions, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second, but I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the city attorney, would the scope of appointments would allow us to discuss resignations from a board in a letter received?
I believe the read-in specifically referenced...
Yeah, resignations is part of that.
All right, thank you, just making sure, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, vote is open.
Penda zero, you have recessed to closed session.
Okay, thank you very much.
I want to bring those two things up. The resignation...